I think he has something to say about the contract.
Yeah, um, line eighteen was, was added in, in an effort to help the Y offset the loss that we take annually to run the pool. In the past, let's see, I want to make sure I got the right one here. Okay, so, over the past several years, from 2020 through 2023, we've lost 10,000, almost 3,000, thirteen, four, fifty, and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars running the city pool. And in, as everybody knows, in our current financial setting, I, at the Y, can't really afford to continue to operate the pool at that kind of loss. And so, the request was made to utilize the clubhouse at Washtau Park for a couple of different reasons. One was to help us reduce the volume of kids that we have at the Y, so that we could provide a better experience for the kids in our community for their summer day camp purposes. Secondly, it would offer, we work with the food bank, so we would be able to provide a feeding site in an area of our community that's underserved. And so, that, you know, if we don't have use of that, then we can't do that, because we have to have a place for the kids to come in and sit down, because we cannot do, our, our deal with them is not a grab-and-go lunch, as the school is. So, we were, that's, you know, that was another reason. Additionally, it would, it would provide a space for the kids who maybe in that community hadn't thought about coming to summer day camp, whose parents might need that, and maybe they stay at home in an apartment, or whatever it is. We do offer financial assistance, and so, you know, we would heavily promote that part. I realize summer day camp started, but, you know, we'll, we can, if we need to staff up and to serve more kids, then that's what we'll do. So, like I said, the, the goal was for us to be in a new part of our community, to, to do something that didn't cost us any additional money, and wasn't gonna, and wasn't gonna take away from the city revenue in that the building sits empty, as it is, for the most part, and we were certainly more than willing to allow the city to rent the facility out on any day of the week that, that somebody requested it, and we would, you know, do, deal with our kids, et cetera. And on the summer day camp end, I don't make, I don't make a lot of money running summer day camp. In fact, again, from twenty, twenty twenty through current, in 2020, we lost five thousand, two hundred dollars running day camp. We made ten thousand, four ninety-seven doing day camp in '21. We lost fifteen thousand, five hundred in 2022, and we lost eleven thousand, six hundred last year. I'm budgeted to make eight thousand, four hundred, twenty-two dollars this year, but that's before it was decided that we were going to increase the wages by two dollars an hour to attract more applicants and et cetera, so that we could hire, hire better quality staff. So, if you average that out over the summer, our revenue would look very similar to last year, so it will likely be a loss there, too. We gave out, in 2023, we gave out ninety-five thousand, two hundred, thirty-two dollars in financial assistance. We only collected seventy-one thousand, three hundred, seventy-six dollars in terms of money from the community to help, you know, to help support that. So, that is another twen- approximately twenty-four thousand dollar loss. This year, our fundraising didn't go as well even as last year, and so, the pledges are only about sixty, sixty-five thousand, so I'm even further behind. So, I just need, I, I'm just trying to make sure that the Y stays viable, and it stays in our community, and this was a way that I was hoping to be able to expand the reach of the Y into the community to provide us, provide services for the kids in our community.
Louis, I appreciate you coming to explain that, because I'll, I'll just address it directly. You know, it got voted no Monday, and then we see this, so it kind of optics-wise seems like it's a thumb in the nose that, okay, we'll run your pool if you approve this.
Yeah, totally.
And it sounds like that wasn't the intent.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, and, and unfortunately, I wasn't made aware that the contract was even being discussed, for example, at the Parks Board meeting, so I didn't know that that was happening, or I would have gladly been there to explain that, and I, I attended the last Parks Board meeting, because I, you know, found out when it was, and a couple of members did come up and ask, you know, about it, and I think once they, once they found out the, the story, they, I think they might have made a different choice in terms of how they voted on that at, at the Parks Board meeting.
I think the goal of the manager here of this contract is, what's the greatest good of our citizens for this summer? I think Louis and I, and Keith and Spencer, we talked, next year, we probably needed a whole Y contract in its entirety, and that probably needs to get brought to the council in January, very early, so we can vet it out. Our citizens, quite frankly, I don't know if they care if the Y runs the pool or the city runs the pool, but I know the kids want to be at the pool, and how do we get that open as fast as possible? And I know that was kind of Keith's goal, because we met on Thursday. So, we haven't sat on this contract for a very long time. I think we all want to see the pool be open, and I think we're all trying to compromise and then understand that this was kind of in lieu, this in-kind, was to kind of help the Y, understanding that the city and the Y both lose money on the pool, quite frankly, because Spencer's guys work really hard at the pool as well, so.
Well, I think everybody up here knows that the Y is providing a service that we can't provide ourselves, so it's not going to be a revenue generator. It's just not. It's kind of like, you know, fire, police, parks, it's, it's not something that's going to make money. But I know there's some other questions, yes.
Mayor, a question for Louis. If I understand correctly, to the citizen, the pool will be open for five hours a day?
Mm-hmm.
One to six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no mornings are available to?
We can certainly explore that. We, we run, we run swim lessons kind of before, before that session and after that session, and then we offer pool parties for the citizens, again, to, to rent out the pool, so that they can use the pool for, you know, a birthday party or, or whatever, and that's a fairly successful thing, you know, a good way for them to get in to use the pool.
I have a question in two other spots, if that's all right?
Okay.
Item one, under the contract, it mentions in the last sentence, when the manager is not on site, a YMCA employee will be named to be in charge, and I just put an arrow to, what are the qualifications of that person?
It's typically when, when the aquatics director's not there, it's a lean lifeguard, somebody who's, has a, a multiple, at least a year, probably typically more, experience. Almost all of our guards are returning guards this year, as they were last year, so, so we do our best to have Corbin, who's, who's our aquatics director, does his best to make sure that whenever he's gone, that there are experienced people there to help with whatever goes wrong, in terms of even to the point of, you know, if there's a question in the pool, or in the pump room, or whatever, and then he's available by phone to, almost, you know, whenever, whenever there's an issue, they'll, they'll call him, and he lives fairly close, so he can, he's usually there in, you know, unless he's out of town, he can be there in ten minutes at most.
Okay, this somewhat similar top of the page, number twelve, and under boldly printed, weekly operational checks. Who does that?
Is that, uh?
There's not a named person, and I don't know who would be doing that, or what their qualifications are, but it speaks of the importance of it. Page eighty-five up here.
Number twelve. Well, we're checking constantly. I got it right here, right? We're, we're always, we're checking it constantly, so I don't know if, if the city comes by and, and does a, does a check. I know the, typically, the, the health inspector comes out and, and looks at least once a season to, to make sure that we're doing everything right. We, we, you know, we go through and check. I know the ci- I believe, Spencer, that your guys come out and check the, the pump room every day, don't they? Pretty much every day?
Make sure you have enough chemical and all that.
Yeah, yeah, so we kind of work on that together, I would say. Would that be fair?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, Mr. Lewis, thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
It would have been helpful to have seen you last time, because it, it looks like now, besides the point of, it looks like a, kind of a knee-jerk reaction to put it into, it's two different issues to have a rental of a, of a meeting space kind of joined into a pool contract. That being aside, how many years have you, has the Y operated the pool now?
My understanding is, I, I spoke to the, the, the Y merged, it was an independent Y, when it was, when it was started in the eighties, I think, and then in 2007, the local Y merged with the, with the YMCA of Grady, Oklahoma City. At that point, I spoke to the executive director, who was, who was here at that point, and he said that the, the Y had been running it before he got here, so, past, you know, before 2007. I don't know the exact date, because I, I don't have those records.
So, for the last how many years has it lost money?
Uh, every year that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, so I have some competency questions about that. Is, are you, do you feel confident that your group can run the pool at even a meager profit?
No, it's impossible, it's impossible to run the, a pool typically at a profit, because if we're to charge, the amount that you'd need to charge, regardless of how many hours we're open, right, it would be unaffordable for folks to be able to come to the, come to the pool. Like, even at the, the Y, the other YMCA's, it's kind of part of the, the membership package, if you will, and so, pools don't ever operate at a, at a, individually, at a profit.
Right, so that leads me to the next point, is that, so it's rolled into your benefits package that you're offering when you sell memberships to the Y, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so there should be a price point in there to consider, at least even a break-even number, to be able to operate anything, not just a pool, but anything. Would you think that'd be a fair statement?
Um, I would say that, that here in Chickasha, we don't, while we mention that we have the pool, or that we run the city pool, it's not a determining factor in, to the best of my knowledge, I, I, you know, I don't know that it's a determining factor in people deciding to have a membership with the Y. We lost more people when USAO closed their pool, rightly so, I mean, Dr. Hale can speak to how much they lost running the pool, and I feel like they did do a good job running the university, and so they didn't make money running their pool. So, you know, I, I lost several folks when, when that closed. We made an alternate, you know, we found an alternative in Anadarko, and, but, you know, we lost several memberships at that point, due to the fact that, you know, they had to go to Anadarko to use the pool, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things where I, I can't sit here and say, I have X number of people, and they expect the use of the pool. Most of the people who come to the pool are paying five dollars a time to come to the pool. It's not, the majority is not members who come and use the pool during the summer.
Okay, so, going right on past that, so, if you know that, and you're taking a loss, expecting to take a loss.
Mm-hmm.
So, you think that the Washtau component in line eighteen is the way to make you whole?
It is a way to make us whole without asking the city to pay us directly to operate the pool, to manage the pool for them.
Even though you have to increase in manpower and actually develop a program?
Mm-hmm.
So, this is what you guys at the Y pretty much said, this is the way to make it happen?
That was our preference, again, to be a good steward, a good partner to the city, to do something that wasn't going to cost the city any extra money, right, so that we could op- operate the pool at, at a loss, right, and make sure that our kids in our town had the ability to come to a safe swimming pool that they could, that they could utilize. You know, the, there's, and, and during the, during the summer, there's, there are lots of kids there, like teenagers and whatever, who if they're not there, who knows where they're going to be and what they're going to be doing.
Other cities that have YMCA's that run the pool are paid by the city to do so, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Bethany, Bethany pays the Y fifteen thousand dollars to run Ripper Park, and Guthrie, when they were running, when they, before their pool had serious issues, they were paying for, around fourteen thousand dollars to, to the Y to manage that pool. The city, Stillwater, was paying twelve to fifteen thousand dollars or more to run the Stillwater, Stillwater City Pool. We, we had never, we had never asked, we, you know, again, we were in a better, maybe, financial position, and so, now I'm just not in that, in that position, and so, I, again, I tried to ask for something that wasn't going to cost the city.
Rather than asking for?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Money.
Yes.
You're asking for use of a building.
Correct.
Are those other cities keeping, you know, the money for gate, or for parties, or for rental equipment and things like that?
No, so, so the, whenever the, when the Y operates the pool, the Y keeps the, the, the revenue that's generated from the pool, and then the, the additional money is, just goes to cover the, the, basically, the labor costs, the, the difference between what, you know, what is collected and what's actually spent.
Is this the first year that you've brought this to the city's attention, as far as losses, every year, and?
No, no, I mean, I've tried to make the, everybody aware that it's, that we do run it at a loss, and, you know, we, again, we try, we, we've tried to be able to do it for the city, for the citizens, you know, as best we could to, to provide a si- a service for the citizens, and sometimes we're not, like, like I said, now, it's just we're to the point where we really need to, you know, on, at least try and mitigate our loss in some way.
So, you need to change your model, basically?
If he changes his model, it might be asking us to pay him ten or fifteen thousand dollars to operate the pool.
Or giving it back to the city and say, hey, city, you find lifeguards, you train them, you pay them.
Right now, we're getting the money.
That's the alternative.
Stick.
As I say, it sounds to me like the revenue from using the Washtau Park is not making you whole, it's just?
No.
Right.
Plugging the, plugging the open wound and applying pressure.
On some level, yeah, but also, again, it's, we're going to be able to provide a service in an underserved area, if, you know, provided we're still able to, because the deadline to, the deadline for, theoretical deadline for applying for a, a feeding site was today, but we may, we may be able to, to access that still, if, if, you know, if this passes today, and, and I have access to that building starting soon, then we can, you know, maybe get that contract with the food bank underway, again, so we can serve kids in that underserved part of town, because I've, Reverend Fletcher, I don't remember exactly which church, he's, he's been trying to work with the Y and, and other places to get a, a feeding site over there, and so, he was, you know, kind of dis- he was disappointed that we weren't able to access the building, because he knew what it was going to mean for the kids in that community.
I've got a couple of questions. Who, who sets the fees for the rentals?
Uh, the Y does.
The Y, okay.
Yeah.
And you're talking about feeding, have you tried to get with the school about their free lunch program, picking those lunches up and taking them over?
Well, the, the, as far as I know, the child has to go and pick the lunch up themselves, they can't have, like, they, they don't go deliver them anywhere, so they have to go to wherever the, wherever the, the school is to, to pick them up, and I don't know that they're doing it at Lincoln. I, I could be wrong, but I don't know for sure.
I wouldn't for sure if you, I wouldn't for sure if the school was there, you were able to pick those up. I think that's it.
Okay.
Need some WD-40. Any other questions for Louis? Any more discussion on the item?
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
Any roll call, please?
Guillen?
Yes.
Hebbeth White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Gertis?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six C, discussion, consideration of possible action resolution 2024-10R, a resolution declaring the eligibility of the city of Chickasha to submit an application to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for use of transportation alternates program funds set forth by IIJA for the Old Town Railroad pedestrian bridge project in the city of Chickasha, Oklahoma, authorizing said applicant acknowledging the local match requirement and the maintenance commitment, and authorizing city manager to sign the application.
A move that we approve ordinance 2024-10R as presented.
Discussion.
We, we get to see the application itself?
Director question.
Oh.
Keith's not here.
I don't, I don't think so.
I think we do have a presentation for this. Am I?
Do you want to do a presentation first before our comments?
I mean, I think.
Discussion?
Yeah, we can, we can do the presentation. I think, Mr. Hitt, don't you have a presentation for this item? And then we'll get the citizen comments after that, because I think, I got a stack here of people that want to talk about this agenda item.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here. I want to give you an update of what we're doing and what's been happening. We mentioned earlier, this particular grant was even caught us off-guard a little bit as far as the timing. We have to have a resolution by council by the end of the month, and we didn't want to have to call a special board meeting, so I tried to meet as many people as I possibly could to ask any questions, and also encourage every council member that I met with to reach out to the city manager if they had questions. So, with that, here we are. Chickasha's been talking about this bridge for eighteen years, about doing a pedestrian bridge. When I first got to town and met with Andy Meyer, with the fairgrounds, we had discussed his issues that he's having with all the people that he has there. With all that, we had, he needs tourism, he wants more facilities, needs hotels, needs access to the downtown area. People are coming into town, they're leaving, and heading out of the area. So, with that, by listening, I put together a booklet, which I think most of you have received over some time, but I took all what I had to listen to in my fight, fact-finding mission here in Chickasha, was to get as much possible information as possibly could to present my vision of what I would like my companies to do, but also, at the same time, is it going to be beneficial to Chickasha? Because if, if it's not a win-win, it's not going to be beneficial to anybody. I have provided this, I had this made. This booklet that we put together for the vision was strictly a vision process, and was a, one person's thought process of where it could go if we put our minds together and try to make it work. Generally, people, or a developer will come into a community, and they're going to ask for all the special tax incentives and all that, and I'm no different. I'm going to ask for anything that I can get, but I want to be real clear, this particular presentation, when I gave it to Lieutenant Governor, and prepared this booklet, did the video, did the renderings, did all the things that I put together, didn't cost this city a dime. It cost me about twenty-five grand to package this, this project, this project. So, I'm coming with a gift that I believe could be beneficial for the future. It's up to you folks whether or not you want to go that direction. So, with that, what I wanted to do is try to come up with a, a vision of where we can take people that go to the Grady County Fairgrounds and bridge it over. So, what I'm going to do is show a video that we presented to the Lieutenant Governor, not everybody has seen this one. Luke? So, when we presented that to the Lieutenant Governor, the purpose of this was, was two-fold. One was to show that Chickasha's up and coming, and there's new things happening, but the other side of it was, again, to bridge the gap with the fairgrounds. So, one of the first meetings I had when I came to town, when they were talking about the bridge being developed, or talking about for eighteen years, one of the things that we did is I met with Rachel, we met with the OakDoc engineers, and everybody was talking about tying the bridge to the ViDoc. The engineers, first thing out of their mouth says, there's no way they will ever tie to that ViDoc. So, the people that have been talking about this for all these years of tying it to the ViDoc is, is out. That's why we designed this bridge. As you can tell, there's a lot of work, from architectures, firm that I had to work with, to design work, we got a lot invested in this so far. But with that, I met with the Grady County Board, Fair Board, I met with both their standard board and their executive board, and with all of them, we did get unanimous vote that they need this just as much as Old Town would like to have it, they need it as well. It could be the catalyst that we need for sales tax, the heartbeat of Old Town, and everything else that's going, going to play, so. So, what I did is we, we did get an interview with Andy, so he couldn't be here tonight, because they actually have a board meeting.
I'm the city council. This is Andy Meyer, Executive Director of Grady County Fairgrounds. Sorry I couldn't be in attendance, but I just wanted to show my support for the pedestrian bridge. As you can see in the background, it's close proximity to downtown, downtown park, and the Linkland. It would be a wonderful opportunity if we could get a pedestrian bridge in place to connect the fairgrounds to all the new development in the downtown area. It's a huge inconvenience for our visitors to have to unload from their trailers upon arrival at, at dance and fairgrounds. The pedestrian bridge will allow those people to access downtown, the park, and all the amenities in downtown without ever having any inconvenience, unhooked under vehicles. The pedestrian bridge will set us leagues miles ahead of all other fairgrounds, as well as communities, not only in the state of Oklahoma, but across the United States.
One of the things that Andy kept saying is, if you look at, they're rated number three in the state right now, the fairgrounds. The only ones beating them out is Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and now Great, the Grady County Fairgrounds. So, with that, if you look for square footage, under, square foot of the whole complex, they're probably number one for operations for what they do out of there, and that was one of the things that he had come to me, and the discussions we had, is how are we going to get more business, bigger events, bigger items here? He says, I don't, back to that RFP that they were talking about earlier, they don't have, they can't check every box to get some of these bigger events here in Chickasha, because they don't have the infrastructure that it needs to do that. So, this is a long-term plan, and that's, that's our goal, is, is to try to get this done. This photo here is showing that we did a little bit of redesign. This is a ADA tower here with staircases. We now have designed it to be all encompassed in all red iron, so the concrete bridge, or I mean, steps that or I mean, steps that you will see will disappear, uh, from there, so we'll be able to take it to a different level. Um, not my best oil, Derek, but, uh, they didn't quite do it, but that was the thought process there, and, and take it from there. Next one. So, this is the span, we figure it's going to be anywhere from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five, maybe thirty feet span to go across the railroad tracks, and just so you know, um, I know there's no mountains in Oklahoma, so forgive me for the, for the snow-capped mountains, but, uh, we did our best we could. So, um, with that, that will show the span of it, and that's, the purpose is it will cover ADA. Uh, we also want to look forward to working with, uh, seat, uh, what is it, T set, uh, with some more walking paths that we can go on both sides of the tracks and be able to create some more walking paths on this project as well. So, that gives it a nice, nice look there. Next one, Luke? Um, this is the beginning of the drover. This was my thought process, was to be able to do a culinary hospitality program. Uh, with that, um, I was very excited about it, uh, had to kind of tone it down a little bit because we wanted to meet with Dr. Hale, not knowing what her thought process was, um, so I did everything I could to meet with her before anybody else got to her. Uh, when she came to town, and the first thing we did is we presented this project, she loved the thought of the Culinary Institute, and with that, even though I think I dream big, this lady dreams much bigger than, than this little guy. So, I'm going to have her come up and present, uh, her thoughts of what the drover and future project there will be that will tie into the pedestrian bridge. Dr. Hale?
Good evening. I'm happy to be here, um, and I'm happy to talk about this project. Um, and I'm also happy to be back in Chickasha. My parents and four generations of the Strain family have been here. I was a student at USAO forty years ago, proud alumna, and I'm thrilled about the opportunity to return here, and this city looks a lot different than it did in the fall of nineteen eighty-three, uh, in the best way possible. So, I'm thrilled to be back. The university has no greater partner than this community. Um, that has gone back, um, to the time that we were established, which was just a hot minute after the city was incorporated. We've been partners since that time. Having that connection is critical for towns the size of Oklahoma, especially when there are populations that are leaving cities and we are growing. That is unique. A university partnership in, a university in a city makes a difference, particularly uh, in Oklahoma City and our legislative body as they are considering, um, which institutions to support and what cities, uh, to invest in. Um, each, you know, the city and the university are separate entities, but so much stronger together. I am, uh, returning to the university, um, with a fresh perspective on what the possibilities could be, and that is coinciding also with the opportunity to rebuild our business programs at the university. And to do that, not only with, uh, the observations that are happening, uh, here in the city, but also in the county, but I also, also I am a person who is data-driven by decision-making, and the thing that I want to be able to do is not only attract the best students and faculty, uh, to the university, uh, but to retain them and then put them to work here. If we can keep that human capital in jobs that are, um, well, um, compensated, then we're doing what we are supposed to do in terms of our mission and being a value-add to the city. Um, one of the things that, um, I'd like to share is that today, the university has engaged with Lightcast Analyst. Um, this is something that our state regents have been using for about three years. It's a data analytics warehouse, and it aggregates, um, data that, from economic, uh, labor market, demographics, education, and job posting data, um, that we can use to inform our decision-making in terms of what it is that we need to make sure our students are embracing, or what our business and community leaders say that they need. Um, gone are the days when a university can operate in a vacuum and think they know best about what should be delivered to students, um, who will actually have to learn, uh, earn a living when they left, when they leave. This data comes from government and, uh, public sector, private sector businesses, so we're going to be able to slice and dice. We've gotten some good information, not from this, uh, but from another data set regarding, um, the computer science, uh, that program that we're reintroducing, uh, that was shuttered in two thousand and sixteen. And as we are looking to this, and as I'm having conversations with leaders in our community, uh, the first people I met, actually, most of them are in this room. I knew that my first matter and order of business, um, was to find the partners, uh, that I needed to know, build relationships with, and who could, who could also guide, uh, me as a university president on what it is that we need. I don't want to have to guess about that, I want to use data, and in terms of what this pedestrian bridge could do for us in terms of, um, catalyst for economic development, will also inform what I can do, uh, in the programs and not just the traditional four-year, well, at USAO you can do that in three years, um, but what we're doing in micro-credentialement, what we are doing in upskilling our current workforce here, and what we are doing to meet the needs of what will be a growing, um, job base. I, I feel that significantly, it was remarkable when I came back and saw it myself. Um, we need help in terms of what we're looking in our hospitality industry, what we're looking in, and hospitality encompasses a lot, you know, it's, it's hotels, it's casinos, it's concert venues, it is anything that relates to, um, bringing people or the, the amenities that people can have when they come to this community. I will share, I'm proud that, um, the University of Science and Arts of Oklahoma hosted the first round of the regional, uh, and our girls are now on to the World Series, uh, but we had seven, we had eight teams, uh, that came to Chickasha for five days. Seven of those eight teams needed hotels, restaurants, entertainment, um, which we were able to give them because of the, of the relationships that, one, our athletic director has with this community, and the commitment that we have as an institution to be good partners and reinvest in our community. Um, I'm trying to convince our athletic director to embrace a baseball regional, uh, for the coming year, um, and we'll see how that goes. All that is to say, we are better together. Um, I am a very transparent leader, um, I don't operate any other way, I'm fairly direct in my conversations, and, um, very committed, um, to the institution and to the city that fundamentally shaped me and gave me the tools that I needed to be a successful professional, uh, and I'm incredibly grateful, um, that forty years later, I have had the opportunity to come back and serve not only the university that I love so much, but the community that means so much to me. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hale.
Thank you.
Thank you.